I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're really pleased that you're all with us this evening. Thank you. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Hollenbaugh.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on November 4th, 2019 were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondents this evening?
I have one item this evening distributed to you prior to the meeting was the financial budget summary report for the month of October 2019. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. Mr. Mayor, I believe you have a special presentation this evening.
Mr. President, members of council and all assembled tonight. This is something we do every year, but I think this year even takes on added import, given the fact that so many of our small businesses are located either in the downtown area or in close proximity to the downtown area. And so this is a proclamation declaring Saturday, November 30th, as Small Business Saturday. And Tony Better, the managing director of Downtown Bowling Green, is here. And Tony, I wanted to present this proclamation to you. And maybe you would help to remind us that we don't need any reminding about the importance of small businesses, especially in our downtown area here, because this is, it says it celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy. There's lots of words that we use every year about the impact on a fully national basis. And 87% of consumers in the United States agree small businesses are critical. We're 93% of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support small businesses they value in their communities. And so we have advocacy groups and so endorse the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, sometimes referred to as Black Saturday.
No.
Or what?
It's Black Friday.
Black Friday.
It's also known as the Ohio State Michigan football game.
Oh, what? What am I thinking of?
Black Friday for maybe.
Really? Really? You want to debate that? I think Mr. Osbacher and I may have a little different twist on that, so in some respects. But in any event, Tony hears this declaring Small Business Saturday on the 30th, and thanks, good luck. And as I said, this takes on special meaning this year because of all the complications in the downtown area. And we're now seeing the very last work being done. And we thank everyone, especially the owners of businesses for their patience, their understanding. And we're very eager, starting this Saturday with the parade and so forth, that we'll hear a little bit more about. But time to get back to Downtown Bowling Green. Feel free to say anything you might wish.
I do have a little thing to say here. First off, thank you very much, Mayor, for the proclamation. Shop Small Saturday is a huge deal for downtown Bowling Green. It's, the business is downtown. Really appreciate the effort that you did this year through all the stuff that we went through to making downtown a better place for everyone. So again, thank you to everyone. Just a couple notes here. Don't forget that the tree lighting is this Friday, and it will be at the Wood County Public Library, and that will start at 6:45. And we have a bigger stage this year. We actually have a story for the children that we're going to read beforehand, and then the mayor will arrive around 7 o'clock with his guests, and the tree lighting will begin after that time. And then on Saturday, the very next day, we have the holiday parade. That starts at 9:50. Is that correct? All right, all right. So we have, it's a great parade. We have lots of bands this year. We have other special events that you will see, people that will be at the parade. So please come enjoy it. The weather forecast right now seems to be pretty good. Black Friday, that's what we just talked about a little bit ago. That is November the 29th. That's still a big shopping day for downtown. A lot of people will shop online during the morning, but then they will come downtown and do the specials that are for that, for the small businesses. And then also Shop Small Saturday is basically that whole weekend. So Shop Small Business Saturday is November the 30th. We have lots of specials downtown. We also have Sienna will be at the Four Corners Building, and he'll be there from 11 to 1:00. And we have performances by Julie's Dance Studio. They will be there. And don't forget that we're at, the promotions go all the way through December. We have from, I think, December the 6th all the way to the 16th. We have holiday decorations for the windows downtown, and you can enter a contest to win. And it's a way to get more businesses into the merchants during the holidays. And we also have a ladies' night, December the 4th. That's specials for the ladies at night with some outstanding merchants that are downtown. And December the 4th, that's Hump for the Holidays. That's where we raise money to the, for the holiday lights downtown. And it's going to be at the Stone Throw, and we have some special silent auction items and a 50/50 raffle, so come and join in the fun. And maybe you can be a big winner and help bring lights to the downtown area. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. We appreciate it. Moving next to lobby visitation. Kay, who do we have for lobby visitation this evening?
We have only one, and it's the ones listed on the agenda from the Sleek Academy.
Great, thank you. We're happy to have the Sleek Academy with us this evening to give us a brief presentation on a program that they're working on. So gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, you have the floor.
We are a new school that has opened up right here in Bowling Green. It is a STEAM school. And we are the Sleek Academy FLL Robotics Team, First Lego League. I think we might be the only one in Bowling Green. We compete, we have, we are a worldwide competition. We will be competing in Toledo in about three weeks. A part of the program is not only building a robot and completing missions, but also coming up and solving a problem. And this year, the problem was city shapers. So if you'll notice on the very back of your handout that we had it explains what the actual problem is, and these boys are about ready to explain to you that basically, we need to figure out a problem, something that we can solve in the city that would make the city a better place for everybody. So I will let the boys take over.
Will they introduce themselves?
Well, sure, yes, they're going to do that.
You need to get close to the microphone, or the people won't hear you.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Hello, I'm Isaac Gump.
And I'm Gage Beerup, and we are the Sleek Academy Thermal Conductors Robotics Team.
First Lego League is an international problem-based project with engineering aspect.
We use innovation project ideas to look around our community to see if there are anything that we can improve upon. With our City Shapers Innovation Project, we identify a problem with a building or public space in our community, then we design a solution, then we share a solution with others and refine it.
The problem with climate in Bowling Green during the long winter months is that people are less likely to attend events and go to businesses downtown. With the combination of cold weather and heavy pedestrian traffic between the BGSU campus and downtown, our team looked for ways to improve life for townspeople, the student body and business.
After analyzing how other cold weather cities deal with comfort and safety of pedestrians, we stumbled upon Toronto, Canada. Toronto has incorporated warming huts into its urban landscape. These warming huts could be incorporated into Bowling Green's landscape as well. People have the ability to attend events more freely without continuously being exposed to the elements. These warming huts should be portable to change with the needs as they arise. Since these huts are portable, they can be taken to events where people are so that outside winter activities can be taken more, can be more tolerable with people more, be more tolerable as people will more likely attend, like tailgating, park events, just to name a few.
After researching many options, we came across Park Hut International Model PSO 003. The structure is portable, durable, and is designed as a perfect cube so it can have maximum space while using as little material as possible. Is big enough to be used by a few people at a time, but small enough to be transported on a flatbed truck. The existing HVAC system is not to Ohio Building Code. The total cost of this unit is $14,000.
After meeting with Matthew Barton at United Home Comfort, we just, the team decided to use a mini-split heat pump. The system is efficient, economical, and simple to maintain. The, it is, it is compliant with Ohio Building Codes. Heating, the system, heating system total cost is $2,000. The approximate total cost is $16,000.
And we got a little model over here. Thank you.
Very good, gentlemen. Thank you very much for presenting that information to us. I'm really impressed with the research that you've done. It seems like a very, seems like a very practical solution to a very real problem. So thank you very much, and good luck in your competition. My guess is you're going to do really, really well.
Thank you.
The mayor had a question for us when he first met us and said, well, how are we going to stop turning this into a drunk motel? And the boys came up with the idea that there will be no seats in the warming huts. So you come in, you get warm, you leave. We figured that would make it a little less inviting to stick around.
Have you also considered that it could be something used by the homeless? We have, you know, we do have some in Bowling Green. We do have shelters for them, but.
It could. We could, we could think about that.
It could be used for most people that's just cold or needed.
Yeah.
Perhaps we could take, you could take your design and come up with an additional design that could surround our new kiosk. And that way, people could be protected from the elements, which is what we want to do anyway. And might be a way to operationalize it.
Can you, I'm not sure, what are the kiosks? I guess I'm not sure what those are.
Oh, the parking lot, too, right, well, has had kiosks where one option is you go from your car to the station, and you enter your information in. And one of the, one of the recommendations that a committee had was if you're going to expand that, make sure there's some sort of a shelter or covering. And if something like that were, were made, maybe with two entrances, or, you know, some adaptation, that might be some way to add the shelter and also have a prototype for expansion later.
That's awesome, yeah, thank you.
Mr. President, I see in the back here, we have another very special guest here. It's usually we see her with the planning commission, Ms. Sleek. She's owner, operator, chief cook, dish and bottle washer.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Fantastic job.
Yeah, once again, guys, great job. Thank you. Let's move on to our agenda. On our agenda, the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. Chair, or Mr. President, I have from the Parks and Recreation Committee a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring financial assistance from the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund.
Thank you, Sandy. Moving on to our official reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council and all assembled. Just a couple of quick points here. Tony has already touched on the event plan for Friday night, our annual community tree lighting ceremony that will start, you said at 6:45, but Chief Mormon and I will be arriving at 7 o'clock, right? Chief, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Will, will you be there, or?
No, I'll be there. We will be arriving at 7:00 P.M.
Behind the wheel, right? And we are going to have some special guests with us that will help with the tree lighting ceremony. The BGSU women's soccer coach, Matt Fannin, and his family, his wife Julie, and his sons, Rowan and Mason. So we can look forward to that. And of course, on Saturday, we've already heard a little bit from Tony about the annual holiday parade, and he's promising, and good weather, is that right, Mary? Okay. But Mary told me, Mary Henkelman here, the president of the Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce, that we have 100 units, nine bands, only three last year, but we're going to have nine bands, pardon, and 20 floats. Okay, well, that's going to be, and then with Jerry Anderson and Ryan Weakman, live broadcast throughout Northwest Ohio, wherever the Channel 11 goes, so forth. So it sounds like a very, very promising occasion, and as always, it's fun and well-attended. And so we have our fingers crossed that everything will go well on the weather front and so forth. So Ryan Weakman will take care of that, right? Then this week, just a little reminder, too, starting today and be through Friday, November 22nd, is International Education Week with the theme promoting mutual understanding. And interestingly, international attires of one kind or another will be on display beginning today and through Friday, as I mentioned, the 22nd, at the Wood County District Public Library. And so I encourage you to stop over and see that. I know I'm looking forward to it, to see what they mean by international attires on display. So that should be very, very promising. And, and that's, well, the other thing I should mention, Bruce, on Friday night, you know, and I'm surprised that you would schedule something in conflict with the community tree lighting ceremony, I'm really putting you on the spot here now, but you have a Welcome Bowling Green meeting, the first one that's been able to, I mean, the council adopted the resolution on Welcome Bowling Green Initiative back in 2017, but you're actually going to have your first meeting of the steering committee this Friday from 6:30 to 7:30, somewhere in there?
That's right, yeah. Well, that's after the meeting for a little reception.
Okay.
But I saw that you were, you're riding the fire truck instead. I thought I'd better go to that.
Okay. Really? Okay, well, thank you very much. And, and also, this, this last Friday, I participated, perhaps some of you were there, but in a fascinating program called Propel Ohio. And our two United States senators, Sherrod Brown was there, Rob Portman, our other United States Senator, could not be there, but he had a live, he had a video talking. But we had over 400 college students from all over the state of Ohio there for this conference, and it was just so much fun to spend time with them. I got to see folks from, from all over Ohio. And from all reports, I could not stay through the end of it or anything, but it was, I think, very, very productive and lots of good interaction. And this, I believe, is the sixth or seventh year that this has been held at different locations in Ohio. And this year was at Bowling Green State University. So, and the folks at the university did a bang-up job in putting out the welcome mat for everyone there. It all seemed to work out beautifully. So that's it. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Other questions for Mayor Edwards?
Only one more regular meeting of council that you can put me on the spot, so.
We'll build up for that. We'll be ready.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate it. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Last September, or early in September of this year, we gave you a presentation about our recycling contract, and we wanted to follow up with you about that. Per the legislation that you passed, we put out a request for proposals. That has a due date of November 20th, so this week. So we will open those this week and analyze them and get back to council with the information that we receive in those proposals. Also wanted to update you that the Sustainability Advisory Committee has now met two times and begun its work. The committee has decided on a subcommittee structure focusing on dedicated focus areas with the goals of looking at what the city is currently doing in areas of sustainability, the potential opportunities, and how best to consider these opportunities and other opportunities as we move forward in the future. And since the mayor mentioned the parade, I have to give you the traffic update. Just remember that Main Street is going to be closed on Saturday morning, no parking. The side streets, many of them are used as the bays for the parade. We get a lot of traffic on the adjacent streets. So if you are traveling in the area, if you're dropping a child off, please plan ahead to take adequate time to get there. There are a lot of people walking, riding bikes, dropping children off, viewing the parade. So again, if you just have a little bit of time built into your schedule, that gives you an opportunity to go a little more slowly, just be mindful, be safe. We have a lot of visitors to our community. We're excited to have them here. We're excited to be on Channel 11 and have everybody looking at Bowling Green and our downtown. And so we hope it'll be a great morning. And that concludes my report, subject to your questions.
Other questions for Lori?
Thank you.
Thank you. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Other questions for Heather? Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley. Other questions for Kristen? Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh? Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
As you, as you know, because you were all there, we had our budget meeting with the Board of Public Utilities on the 12th. And we'll be going back to the board on the 25th, next Monday, to ask them to approve the budget, and then they do approve it, we'll go on to you for your consideration as well. I have nothing else beyond that point, but if you have questions about the budget or want to talk about anything else in more detail, feel free to call me or email me, or I can help answer any questions you may have about that before it gets to you, I guess. But that's all I have.
Great, and other questions for Brian? Brian, thank you. We appreciate the hard work of you and your staff on preparing the budget.
I will let them know. Thank you.
Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
Leaf collection got started today. Last week, snow pushed it back a week, so that'll, we'll try to make time up. And we'll get two crews out in Ward 3 today and try and get it swept down before Thanksgiving. It'll be close. Downtown, Mary, the cones should be gone tomorrow off Main Street. They will return Monday after. I'll give you the date, the 25th, and they're going to do Wooster Street and do that in about a day and a half, do all of East and West Wooster. Next week, be in the holiday week. Just to remind anybody that lives in the Thursday collection, Thursday's refuse will be collected along with Wednesday, on Wednesday. We've done that about for 10 years. We'll put the message boards out and the notice will be in the paper, but Thursday next week will be collected on Wednesday. That's my report, and if you have questions, I mean.
Other questions for Brian?
Brian, just comment. Yesterday, driving down Wooster, I saw waterline had ruptured, and the guys were working on it, and the very cold weather, and I presume they, some of them were getting wet, and that was pretty tough stuff. I presume they get some extra pay for working on Sunday, but I just want to pass along that we certainly, I'm sure I can speak on behalf of the entire city when I thank them for working out in those tough conditions.
Okay, I agree. Appreciate it. Yeah, those are work, those guys for Brian, so I was glad it was there, not downtown.
Don't even say it. Thank you, Brian. That completes our official reports. We do thank you for those reports. Do we have any council committee reports this evening? Very good, then we will then move on to the reading of legislation. Kay.
Legislation for first reading. I don't have the number.
3750.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Resolution number 3750 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring financial assistance from the Clean Ohio Conservation Program Fund.
Mr. President?
Ms. Roland.
I move to suspend the rules and give Resolution 3750 its second and third readings.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes. Motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3750.
Resolution number 3750 for second and third reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring financial assistance from the Clean Ohio Conservation Program Fund.
Mr. President?
Ms. Roland.
I move to adopt Resolution 3750.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8803 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to request proposals and enter into a contract for the purchase of transportation service for the Bowling Green Transit Program.
Legislation for third reading. Resolution number 3745 for third reading. Resolution authorizing the sale of obsolete or unfit municipally-owned personal property which is not needed for public use by Internet auction, and authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a contract with GovDeals Incorporated for ongoing Internet auctions for calendar year 2020.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt Resolution 3745.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution 3745 is adopted.
Resolution number 3747 for third reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to enter into a programmatic agreement between the city of Bowling Green and the State Historic Preservation Office, formerly known as Ohio Historic Preservation Office, for the administration of activities funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Ohio Development Services Agency, formerly known as Ohio Department of Development.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hollenbaugh.
I move that we adopt Resolution 3747.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8803 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8805 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into an agreement with AMP Inc. for the renewal of the Efficiency Smart Program.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8804.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8803 is adopted.[1697.99]
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Holland Ba?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance eight, eight, zero, three is adopted.
Ordinance number eight, eight, zero, four for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into an agreement or agreements with AMP Transmission LLC to provide a fourth transmission interconnection.
I move to adopt Ordinance eight, eight, zero, four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Holland Ba?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance eight, eight, zero, four is adopted.
Ordinance number eight, eight, zero, five for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into an agreement with AMP Inc. for the renewal of the Efficiency Smart Program.
I move to adopt Ordinance eight, eight, zero, five.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Holland Ba?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.